I want to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight, and I'm going to ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Monday, July 27th at 5:00 PM regarding the final budget public hearing for UG and CDBG in the commission chambers. Roll call. Bynum?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
McHernan?
Here.
Mugia?
Johnson?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Fieldbrook?
Here.
Holland?
Here. All right, I want to thank everyone for coming. This is our final budget public hearing for this year. We will have a workshop immediately following this, well, 15 minutes following this, and then we will have Thursday's agenda. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bach to make presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission, citizens. This is the final public hearing after really what has gone through of a process where we start our budget process in the fall of the year. We go through strategic planning. We start our first public hearing, as you can see on this, in February of the year. That's the time we really look for people to come in or groups to come in and tell us what's important to them. So, as I reach out to departments in the months of March, we've reached out to the citizens to find out what they're looking to build into our budget. We spend the next several months working through proposals that have been submitted to us, determining what's important, what's going to rise up to be the highest level of need, and then advance that to the commission, which is submitted in July. And then we submitted through the, this month, working in workshops to determine and kind of finalize different matters that were presented in the proposed budget. I will note, in the 2016 highlights for the budget was submitted, we have no mil rate change to what our existing budget was. We're able to build upon our fund balances from previous years, which has been a strategic goal of the commissions. Been able to repay some special funds, which we had to borrow from in years past in order to balance our budget. Enhancement somewhat to our Parks and Recreation Fund, which has really seen a lot of impact since the recession in 2007 and '08. Address employee compensation in this budget, which really is the first time we've done that well within the last five years. Put more in capital investment, looking to cash that we have in hand, which was largely a result of some of the economic development projects that we've done in the western part of our community, putting money back into our budget. A new initiative for urban redevelopment to put money into distressed areas. Invested more money toward animal control. And, what we're doing in open data and innovation with the unveiling when we proposed our budget about our new open gov system, which makes it very easy for anybody to get in and look through our budget, see where we're spending our money. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Reginald Lindsey, our Budget Director, who's going to talk specifically about some of the numbers we have in this before we open the public hearing.
The 2016 proposed budget is a $323 million budget that is balanced on the expenditure side and the revenue side. Our main source of revenue are our property tax, which come in at 27%, which is $3.6 million more than the 2015 budget. Coming in to close second, third, and fourth are sales tax, charges for services, and franchise taxes. Sales tax, we forecast should come in at $2.3 million more than 2015. On the expenditure side of the budget, this is where our funds go out. We can see public safety is our largest category of spending, at 39%. The expenditure side of the budget funds over 200 services and funds over 30 state-certified funds. Capital spending in expenditure budget is up $7.4 million over 2015's budget. Now, we'll turn it over to Wilbur Miller, our Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Bach. The Unified Government of Wyandotte County receives an annual allocation of entitlement funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for three programs. The Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. In order to receive these funds, the Unified Government must submit a five-year consolidated plan, which includes an annual action plan for that particular fiscal year. That five-year plan includes an assessment of housing needs for both affordable and special needs housing, a housing market analysis, housing priorities and strategies to address those priority needs, a five-year strategic plan, and an annual action plan. This annual action plan consolidates those three grant programs into a single application. The application must include a description of the projects and activities expected to be undertaken using grant funds and any expected program income. The slide, the current slide shows examples of eligible activities under the CDBG program. The plan also includes actions that the Unified Government expects to take during the program year to address the strategies described in the five-year plan. The Unified Government must also hold two public hearings to inform the community about the plan, the plan process, and to collect community input. As noted before, the first public hearing was held on February 23rd of this year, prior to developing and publishing that five-year plan. We have developed the new five-year plan for fiscal years 2015 through 2019, which includes the annual 2015-16 action plan. In addition, the Citizen Participation Plan was also amended during this process. The draft plan was published on June 25th, and citizens were given 30 days to comment, and we are fulfilling the second public hearing requirement tonight. The plan process is guided by the CDBG Budget Committee. This committee met several times to develop the revised, excuse me, revised 2015 and proposed 2016 budgets. Subsequently, revisions were made to the budget, and those changes were discussed in a committee of the whole meeting held on June 25th, and the Unified Government Budget Workshop held on July 16th. No changes have been made to this budget since those were agreed to and discussed at the Budget Workshop Meeting. The changes and any narrative changes will be incorporated into the draft documents and made final for submission to HUD. The 2015-16 Annual Action Plan is summarized by the following slides and is shown by categories and activity. For instance, this slide is for Community Development Block Grant Funds. $2,335,066, which includes $310,000 in prior year funds. The Home Grant Budget, $517,343, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Budget, $183,324, for a total of over $3 million in total funding. The five-year consolidated plan must be submitted to HUD 45 days prior to our fiscal year that starts October 1st, which means submission must be and cannot be absolutely no later than August 15th. Failure to submit the plan by August 15th will automatically result in a loss of funds. This concludes my portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mayor, with that, that includes our presentation tonight.
All right, so we will move forward with our public hearing. Before we do, I want to recognize two fellow public officials who are here. Ms. Mary Ann Flunder from the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, in her regular chair, third from the left in the front row. We appreciate your consistency, Ms. Flunder. I also want to recognize Dr. Evelyn Hill, who is the President of the District 500 School Board. Welcome to you also. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk to manage the public hearing.
We would like to welcome all present to the public meeting of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, regarding the Unified Government 2015 amended and 2016 proposed budget. Community Development Block Grant, 2015 through 2019 five-year plan, and 2015 annual action plan. We appreciate the attendance of those people here this evening, and we recognize the importance of your views. We would, however, remind you that there are 11 individuals signed up to speak. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. Should you go to the two-minute mark, I will announce that you have one minute remaining, and that will allow you time to wrap up your comments. As you come to the microphone, please state your name and city for the record. On deck means that you will be next to the podium. We would appreciate your efforts to be considerate to all during their comments. We ask that anyone with a cellphone to please turn them off or switch to non-audio. Once comments begin, we would appreciate no talking, clapping, or outbursts, so you will not disturb the hearing for recording purposes and for TV viewers. If any distractions occur, you may be asked to leave. To the podium, Marsha Rupp. On deck would be Dr. Evelyn Hill.
Marsha Rupp, 2816 North 46th Street. Welcome, good evening, to all the Commissioners, Mayor, and our county administrator. I want to start with, we had some diversity meetings this year about hiring, but I guess we forgot all about hiring, okay? When our mayor was brought into office, Mayor Holland, okay, with him was also brought a little bit more power on the mayor's side, okay? And some was taken away from the commission and the administrator, okay? So, I believe the buck stops there, okay? And he's not just his fault, okay? You're all a team. But somebody, I believe there's two people that go to the meetings, are on a committee at the Sheriff's Department, two of the Commissioners. Is that still true, Mayor, or?
There are numerous committees that the Commissioners are involved in, including with the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Well, I would like to see something where the Commissioners are involved with the Fire Department and the Police Department, to kind of oversee them, to let Mr. Bach know and our mayor know how short they are, okay? We are 23 short right now in the, in the Police Department. We're 21 short in the Sheriff's Department, 14 short in the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, 23 short, 21 short, Fire Department. There you go. 41, we're going to be short in the Fire Department in December. In December, we're going to be 36 short, I heard, in the Police Department. I don't know what's going to happen in the Sheriff's Department there. But, you know, these are the three most important departments in this government. Every department is, every department is important, but these three are the most important because they're life-saving units. They're about the value of human life. And I know our mayor understands that. He's a minister also. I know he understands the value of human life. We need to get something done here, that we're keeping these, all three of these units up to date. Not only on personnel, but equipment and technology. We're way behind. There's three things that make a city a great city. A fire department, a great fire department, a great police department, and schools. We have two of them, but you guys are tearing them apart. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just set the record straight. The charter that was set out in 1997 with the role and responsibility of the mayor has remained unchanged since 1997. Thank you.
Dr. Evelyn Hill to the podium. Mary Ann Flunder will be on deck.
Mayor, and Commissioners, and Mr. Bach and staff, thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon. I have on a different hat. I am standing in for Mr. Tom Liley, who is the President/CEO of Heartland Habitat for Humanity. So, he's on vacation and asked me if I would just come in and share just some of the great things that's been happening with the partnership that Heartland Habitat has had with the UG. The mission of Heartland Habitat for Humanity is to strengthen families and communities by increasing the number of quality, affordable homes for single-family residents in the greater Kansas City area. Since 1987, Heartland Habitat for Humanity has built, rehabbed, or repaired more than 450 homes in our five-county service areas, which include Wyandotte, Johnson, Leavenworth Counties, and Kansas, Clay, and Platt on the Missouri side. Our services are new home construction, a brush with kindness, which is minor exterior repair, Veterans Housing Initiative, which includes both exterior and interior repairs for those homes, and homeowner education. Since 2004, Heartland Habitat for Humanity has partnered with the Unified Government to receive federal home funds to build new housing for low-to-modern-income individuals and families. Forty-four new homes constructed using home funds. Total home funds used equals $1,673,213, average $38,000 per home. Private funding leverage through home funding, $3,696. And community economic benefit, $478,500 in real estate taxes paid. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Flunder to the podium. Charles Davis will be on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and the Commissioners and Bach. My name is Mary Ann Flunder. Right now, I'm standing at 1260 Delaware Parkway, 66109. Commissioners, I know I usually attend most of the meetings, but I was ill February and March, and I was not aware of the deadlines that came about. But since I've been out of the hospital and been home, I've received 13 calls. One of them was on the transparency that you spoke about at the Standing Committee meeting. And it's very, very hard, because we don't have cans and newspaper, but to depend on just your Commissioner, I guess, getting you the information. My suggestion is that we need to use the few papers that we do have, the Call, the Globe, Dos Mundo, and Wyandotte West, at least, so that when you will have proposals to go out, that you will receive more than one, and then you won't be in that predicament. But you have got to be more transparent, bold with community development, and with the Argentine Betterment Association. The second thing I want to talk to you about is that if there's any changes in the community development forms, that some kind of way through the neighborhood groups, they'd be able to receive that. A lot of us do attend those, and also attend the meeting out to Indian Springs at the, oh shoot, not Mary Jane Johnson, but you know what I'm talking about.
Neighborhood Resource Center?
And also...
You have one minute, ma'am.
Okay. I would like to see, is it possible for the Purchasing Department to give businesses the list of Black, Mexican-American, and women-owned contractors lists? Can I say one more thing?
You've got some time.
If you've got any money left over, I have an excellent program called the STEM program that I would like to use.
Thank you, Ms. Flunder.
Charles Davis to the podium. Daniel Welch will be on deck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. First of all, I want to thank you for what you did last year by allowing me to work with the city, to work with the court system, and see if we can do anything about dropping down the deficit as far as individuals who owe tickets, fines, and getting them, getting them to come to court and start paying on their tickets and their fines. Our program, which is called DRW, which stands for Doing Real Work, Inc., you funded this program last year with a $50,000 grant from this Block Grant Department, and we successfully completed that grant. We successfully completed what we said we were going to do. And we are now in front of you again for the 2016 budget. I left a package, so you can read it. I know I only have three minutes to speak, and I know it would take longer than three minutes for me to actually give you a whole proposal of what I'm asking, but I can do it in two minutes, well, actually a minute and a half. What I'm proposing is to continue to work for the city and the court, along with the district municipal court, in working with individuals who are afraid to come to court because of rumors that if they show up to court, they're going to jail. This has been proven that that does not happen. Judge Ryan and Judge Lampson have really taken their time working with me, along with several other judges in our court system, to allow me to work with them to help lower the proceedings in court, which is costing a lot of money. One of the main things I do want to say is that we did save the city a lot of money in courts, as far as fines, as far as manpower, as far as warrants. We started off at a position where it took about two months for me to actually get started in a program that didn't actually start...
You have one minute, sir.
Didn't actually start the way it was supposed to, and that was because of our contract that we had. But, other than that, everything worked out perfect. And we had Ms. Wilbur come over and do an oversight of our organization, and she found it to be in excellent condition. So, all I'm asking to you today is that if it's possible, if we can continue to let me work with the city and work in this program again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Welch to the podium. Dennis Harris on deck.
Hello, my name's Dan Welch, 6221 Armstrong. Commissioners, Mayor, Administrators, those of you who know me, know I come to talk about parks.
Speak up as much as possible, please.
The proposed 2016 UG budget for parks is a breath of fresh air. It is generally satisfactory. A few weeks ago, I heard Mayor Holland mention that Kansas City, Kansas was one of the most diverse cities in the United States. Some of you may recall, a few years ago at a budget hearing, I mentioned Olive Clifers' experience with diversity at Split Log Park in 1916, and how, years later, it helped change the world. This year, we celebrate the centennial of two parks, Kensington Park and Edgerton Park. Both arrived in the era of Jim Crow, but a third park, Heathwood, suffered the most turmoil. It was a very dark era. Over the years, our parks have seen these two worlds of thinking, bright and dark, but there has been one constant idea, apparently unique, through all of these years in Kansas City, Kansas. Everyone needs a park. This helps to explain why we have so many parks. In recent years, a few of our parks have seen a renaissance, showing renewed popularity. I wish there were more parks in this category, but it does show what is possible. Now, we have the proposed Parkway Project. Many 100-year-old Parkway Project ideas were stalled long ago to satisfy demands of a different era. It's time for all our parks to move us ahead again and lead us into a new era.
Thank you.
Dennis Harris to the podium. Brenda Schippers on deck.
Dennis Harris, 5926 North 123rd St. Street. I'm here on behalf of the Wyandotte County Fair Association. Appeared here before. Just here again this year to ask you to please consider the increases in the budget that we've asked in our presentation of a written, in a written form. We're operated now entirely by volunteers. We have no salaried employees. We have a beautiful grounds that has a want for development. We can't grow if our budget remains the same. Basically, with the budget we get from the Unified Government, we can pay our liability insurance on an annual basis. We can pay our utilities on an annual basis, and we can pay our part-time contract labor during the fair. The rest of the year, we are at a loss as to growing the fairgrounds because we do not have the funds to develop it. We did receive a grant from two Commissioners from their Hollywood Casino Funds this year, for a grant for the Shooting Sports Facility, and we certainly appreciate that, and we're going to begin work on that in the immediate future. But as you can see, $77,000 plus the statutory reimbursables does not go very far on the fairgrounds. We've got a few fair participants here. I think most of them are trying to recuperate from the last week. It was a long period of time. Those from the fair, would you stand up? Kids, some of them are sleeping. And a few members, few members of the Fair Board, and we'd certainly ask you to consider the budget as we presented it. These kids have worked hard on the project, and we'd like to work harder and develop a ground that would be suitable for them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brenda Shivers to the podium. Randy Willbanks on deck.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Shivers. I'm a board member with the Northeast Economic Development Corporation, a CDC in KCK, located at thirteen-oh-one Quandero Boulevard. NIDEC has been in existence since 2008, primarily serving the northeast area of Kansas City, Kansas. We are the infants of the Kansas City CDCs. I'm very proud of what has been accomplished by community housing and also ONDA, and I remember when they were in their infancy. If given the same opportunities, NEDC would do the same. Today, I would like to address what I perceive to be an unfair process that is occurring based on your decision regarding the proposed use of CDBG funds. In 2014, NIDEC almost lost a hundred and forty thousand dollars because the funds had not been utilized. Unfortunately, for some reason, the board was not made aware that these funds were available to us. Due to technicality and the efforts of Commissioner Townsend and Commissioner Maddox, we were able to retain those funds. District Six was awarded five hundred thousand dollars for the Highland Crest Project at the same time. However, based on NEDC's experience, some felt a precedent and process had been established. You have the spending funds, you have been awarded, prior to being awarded additional funds. As you are aware, NEDC did not apply for funds this year based on that precedence. But the CDBG Budget Committee recommended that ABC/District Six get an additional four hundred thousand dollars without spending any money that they had previously been awarded. Although ABC District One, District Six was the only applicant for the Beacon More the project, it does not necessarily mean that you should fund them in their entirety. Mr. Mayor, I would put forth the following recommendations. All CDCs be held to the same requirements. You must spend the funds that you already have prior to being awarded additional funds. The four hundred thousand dollars that is being proposed with destination for ABC/ABC, District Six be reduced to two hundred thousand dollars, resulting in a total of seven hundred thousand dollars being given to them. The remaining two hundred thousand be given to the Emergency Home Repair Program and the Handicap Accessibility Program. The Department of Community Development does an excellent job of putting forth efforts to accommodate the wishes of the Community Development and Budget Committee. I am sure they will appreciate your assistance in making things right based on their day-to-day experiences. Thank you.
Randy Willbanks to the podium. Rusty Roberts on deck.
Mayor, Commissioners, staff. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before you on behalf of Wyandotte County Builders and Developers. I am a builder and developer in Wyandotte County. We currently have three main areas that we're building and developing in, Newbury at Piper, Pavilions at Piper, and Highlands at Piper. We appreciate the consideration for 2015, and I know that we reinstated some of the moratorium on fees late spring, and that was a very positive step. We currently, since then, have pulled about twenty-five building permits. As a result of that, we currently have about four million dollars' worth of projects under construction. The economic impact of that, it will generate, once those projects are completed, about eighty thousand dollars a year in tax. So over the next ten years, those projects will result in about eight hundred thousand dollars' worth of money coming into the Unified Government. As far as our position goes, we think in an era of budget shortfalls and angst over trying to figure out budget issues, which I know you all wrestle with all the time, we think this represents an investment. Over a ten-year period, if we continue to waive the... For this next year, we continue to waive the building, the permit fees, a five thousand dollar waiver will result in about an eighty thousand dollars coming into the county's coffers, Unified Government's coffers, over a ten-year period. So it's a five thousand dollar investment and an eighty thousand dollar ultimate return. Part of the reason that we need this is to level the playing field. Currently, the taxes in our region are...
You have one minute, sir.
Roughly about thirty percent more than they are in Overland Park and Johnson County. So to level the playing field, we are at about a thirty percent disadvantage. So we would just... I would like to respectfully request that for 2016, that we continue on with what we put in in the spring of 2015. It's meant a lot to us. We have put our money where our mouth is. Like I say, we have about four million dollars under construction ourselves, and we plan to do considerably more in the balance of this year and the rest of 2016. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rusty Roberts to the podium. Robert Hughes on deck.
Good evening. Or, yeah, good evening. I'm Rusty Roberts. Yeah, good evening, Mayor Holland, Commissioners, Doug, everybody. So, anyway, I'm Rusty Roberts, live at one-one-two-one-two Roland. I'm a fourth-generation Wyandotte County builder, developer, and I'm here to talk about the moratorium on the fees. I have twenty-six or twenty-four real estate agents in my office, and we're... We see what happens on the front line every day, you know, the people that want to live here and don't want to live here. We see the ones, some of the Cerner people, that will come here, and some that won't come here. As Randy talked about it earlier, we're thirty percent higher than Overland Park on taxes, and that equates to about a hundred dollars a month on a payment. And they look at the numbers, they do the math. Four thirty-five is just awesome. They can get on it, and they can go north or south, they can go to Platt City, they can go to Parkville, they can go to Shawnee, they can go to Lenexa, and we lose out buyers all the time simply because of that. We see it, but the numbers really tell a story. When, you know, Kansas City's this big, the whole Kansas City area, and we have about eight percent of the population, and when Kansas City's this big, we only have four percent of the new homes that are getting built and sold. So we're kind of falling behind, and anything we could do to help out new homes would really be helpful. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Robert Hughes to the podium. Richard Maybien on deck.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator. I'm Robert Hughes, Hughes Development Company. Our office is ten-twenty-one North Seventh Street. I am on the NIDEC board. I'm not here to speak about NIDEC specifically. I'm on, I see you're laying here, I'm on the SMID board. I guess Lynn hasn't spoken about our application in for SMID, but I am here to talk about what some of these other developers have talked about. They're out west, I'm trying to do something in the northeast area, and I can't see about how many homes we've built. Peregrine Falcon, we started in the early 2000s, and we got moving over a long period of time, and put the first house in the ground in 2008, and then the bubble burst. We didn't have a bubble to burst, but we got burst in that bubble. Peregrine has languished. One of the things we did find out in our efforts to sell the five homes that we were able to get constructed, was that even with all the great location, proximity to employment centers, accessibility, that there were problems trying to convince our potential home buyers that this area was coming back, because they asked, "What else is happening in the area?" And we couldn't answer that question. We had a lot of ideals, and so I'm here to suggest to you that with all that good location, we need a greater comprehensive plan. I presented to the Economic Development Staff a proposal. I presented that to Commissioner Townsend and to Commissioner Johnson, and I've sent a copy to Commissioner Bynum, and we're saying that we need to get a little smarter in how we address development in the harder areas to develop. I'm developing market rate housing, trying to bring market rate interest back to the northeast area, to be a catalyst to create other goods and services coming back to the area. It's a private-public partnership that can make this happen. If you look across the river at the Beacon Hill area, started about the same time, and it languished.
You have one minute, sir.
Until the local government political force and the local administrative force in the local government said this is a priority. It had all the great location. Now that area's attracting all kinds of developers. They're building major multi-thousands-of-dollar houses. They've got universities coming to build dormitories. They've got people wanting to build grocery stores. It's a catalytic effect, because now the adjacent areas are getting private developers. We are smart as they are. We can do the same thing. I was on a development team that made an application for that redevelopment project. They put some big names behind that, names called Dunn and called Zimmer, but it still took all that time. So I'm not discouraged about the amount of time that it's taken, I'm just needing us to get that back on the table and make it happen. Thank you.
Richard Maybien to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and Mr. Block. Actually, I think I'm at the wrong meeting, but I'm here. I came in because of this concern that's been going around about the CBD money and the cutting of the home, emergency home repair bills. My concern was that as soon as I saw that home, emergency home repair bill, it made me think of energy efficiency, and that's what we do in these homes, because really, that's what's missing, that's what's needed in the homes. And to me, it's time for us to start facing the fact. I was coming to you to suggest that you consider collaborating with us environmental folks out here. Your environmental groups don't talk to me, and you all of you know who I am. I've never had a message from not one of them. I've never been asked any advice, I've never been asked one thing by all these healthy neighborhood groups that you got in Wyandotte County. So I'm coming to you because I want to start meeting with you. I'm sitting here, I just got a press release just yesterday, day before yesterday, on action to build resilience and climate change impact in vulnerable communities. And when I started reading into it, after seeing this thing about the home repair bills for the emergency home repair bill, they have a brand-new program that's been set up by the Cash Rescue Foundation, that's offering ten million dollars, two of which has been spent, for doing just that, working in low-income communities, influencing local and regional climate resilience planning, policy development, and implementation that better reflects the priority and needs of the low-income community. Let's just be honest about it. When you have to come up from where we're coming up as a city, like most cities are, the low income can be lost in the shuffle. Everyone I've talked to you this day, no one's talked about the poor.
You have one minute, sir.
So I'm saying that we need to have a direct way that we can come in and sit down and talk to you. I don't care if it's nobody else but me. I'm developing a system, a collaborative group out here, that's going to do nothing but be able to work with our poor and find ways to find additional money so that we don't have to be haggling with you on the budget, because I know when you take money from one part and put it somewhere else, that means something else is going to lose. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, those are all that signed up this evening. The Clerk's Office did receive an email today and requested that it be read into the record. It says, "CHWC supports the CDBG funds for affordable housing in Wyandotte County and applies to the Unified Government Commission for budgeting the use of CDBG funds in a manner that truly begins to rebuild our neighborhoods. However, CHWC was not noticed a visible shift in the year's application process. For the first time in many years, the Unified Government now seems willing to invest a much larger dollar amount into affordable housing via the CDBG program when compared to previous years. In CHWC's case, we opt to not apply this year because we have not been awarded CDBG funds since 2011. In 2011, we received seventy-one thousand, one hundred in CDBG funds for minor home repairs projects for low-income homeowners. Minor home repairs is an ongoing need for low-income families due to the age of the housing stock in our community. It remains an important tool and our community development tool for ongoing revitalization efforts." CHWC has conditioned our organization not to rely on CDBG funds for new housing since it has been quite some time since this funding was relevant to our organization and our community programs. Now that it has been made apparent to use that bricks-and-mortars projects are a high priority use for CDBG funds, CHWC will make application next year to assist our organization with the construction of new affordable housing. Sincerely, Donnie E. Smith, Executive Director, CHWC.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We do, we will have a budget hearing upstairs, or not hearing, a budget workshop upstairs. We have a number of items. I will say that there is a budget workshop scheduled for five o'clock on Thursday. That is an open position, but I am now adding CDBG to that agenda. We received, after the meeting last Monday, Commissioner McGee requested of the Ethics Commission, Ethics Administrator, a request for a review of the policy in terms of whether or not she could participate and vote on ABC's applications because she was listed on the application... ONDA was listed on the application, which is the organization that pays her salary. My office and the Commissioners all received a letter from the Ethics Administrator just today, at about four-thirty today, was brought up to the office, that clarified actually my point, that Commissioner McGee should not have voted in the subcommittee or even in the straw poll for the decision that we made last Monday. So that puts it up in the air, because it was six votes, and that, without that vote, it would be five votes, which is not enough to move it forward. So we're going to need to reevaluate that on Thursday by virtue of that ruling, and we will take it up at that time. So, thank you very much. Commissioner Kane.
Well, the Ethics Lady, in conclusion, said, "Having reviewed the video of July sixteenth, 2015, the underlying documents and applications, prior documents, the Office of Ethics Administrator find that no intentional violation of ethics code by anyone with respect to CBG process. If ONDA's name remains in the application, because of lack of clarity with the application form and who receives the fund, Commissioner McGee would be disqualified from voting from ABC Project, and ONDA would be prohibited from receipt of UG funds from ABC Project's approval. The preferred practice would be the application form would require specific disclosure and the role and interest, financial and otherwise, and participating agencies. Absent such disclosure, the appearance is, they would be sharing the funds." And I was under the understanding, if they scratch off ONDA, that that would be okay.
Well, I think we need to have a discussion with that on the, by the Commission. We have another budget hearing, budget workshop to work through that. I think we need to take time as a body. Each Commissioner, I'd invite you to read the ruling by the Ethics Administrator, and we can come to a discussion on Thursday about how we want to handle that. So I think it's premature. I've had this document for thirty minutes prior to this meeting, and I think based on that, we need to bring it back to the Commission for full consideration. All right. That concludes our meeting tonight. We will reconvene upstairs in fifteen minutes at seven o'clock. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We are, excuse me, six o'clock. It's six o'clock. We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.